Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Villa Park City Council. I hereby call the meeting to order. Steve, will you please call the roll?
Mayor Nelson?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Colacotta?
Here.
Councilwoman Fassanelli?
Present.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilman Rosini?
Here.
All present.
Next, we'll have the Pledge of Allegiance by a distinguished citizen. Tonight, I'm continuing our tradition of inviting a Villa Park distinguished citizen to lead us in the pledge, and tonight, we have Jill Culli. Jill Culli has lived in Villa Park for 43 years, along with Dennis, a husband of 54 years, and Dennis is also the current volunteer City Villa Park Treasurer. They've raised three sons that attended local Villa Park schools and colleges in California. In addition, the Culli family hosted three foreign exchange students. Two of their three sons, Eric and Mark, and their families also live in Villa Park. Six of eight Culli grandkids have attended schools in Villa Park, attending all four schools, and they continue to provide exciting sports and school events for the family to enjoy every week. Over the years, Jill has volunteered for literally hundreds of community events, organization projects in our town, even while employed. In addition, Jill is a monthly correspondent for the Hidden Jew magazine. As retired teacher and education psychologist, Jill worked for the Tuscon Unified School District. Jill's passion continues to include education of others as well as herself. Jill has served as Director of Communications for the Villa Park Community Service Foundation for the past nine years. If you see a foundation event banner around town, chances are that Jill designed it. For many years, Jill has chaired the summer concerts in the Villa Park, the Santa Tua Buffet Engine, as well as past two Villa Park City Council candidate forums. Jill has been a member of Villa Park Women's League for 43 years. She's currently the co-first Vice President in charge of general meeting programs. Over the years, she's served in many advisory boards and committed positions, chairing a home tour gift boutique inside the historic Villa Park Elementary School. She especially enjoys the publicity and city school liaison opportunities which tap to literary and creative juices plus knowledge of the school needs. Jill is a charter member of the Rotary Club of Villa Park, has held many major leadership roles as well, chaired or participated in dozens of volunteer projects each year since 1996. She initiated the free electronic waste and paper shredding events which benefit Ronald McDonald House. Current project favorites include delivering meals on wheels to the homebound and supporting the needs of homeless students through Skyview Schools. Involvement in the Philip Trampic Educational Organization, PEO Chapter S Orange since 1996, has provided Jill many opportunities for self-education as well as major project involvement to provide financial aid for college women. She was recently president of this chapter and previously held most other official roles and served on many committees. She currently creates the chapter yearbook. In addition, Jill co-chaired the 2017 PEO California State Convention Gift Shop. Jill says, remember that volunteerism is a gift that keeps on giving in all directions for years to come. Jill has a Bachelor Arts from the University of Redlands, a Master Arts from the California State Long Beach. She's received numerous awards, including the Orange PTO Community Service Award, California Associated School of Psychologists, and School Psychologist Award, Tuscon Exemplified School Psychologist, Rotary Club of Villa Park Rotarian of the Year twice, Villa Park Women's League Community Service Award, Villa Park Women's League Athena Nominee, Rotary Club of Villa Park Athena Nominee, Villa Park Community Services Volunteer of the Year, One OC Spirit of Volunteers Outstanding Community Volunteer. I give you distinguished citizen and could be called Villa Park's Distinguished Volunteer. Now, I have Jill Culli to lead us in the pledge.
I was born in America. I have been many other countries, but nothing meets the love I have for the United States. So, please join me with the Pledge of United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Jill, I have a distinguished citizen being for you and like to take a picture with the full council.
Okay.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like all those in the audience to please silence your cell phones or turn them off if possible. Villa Park City Council staff welcomes you to this meeting and we encourage your participation. If you wish to address the City Council, please complete and submit a speaker card to the City Clerk before the scheduled meeting time. Speaker cards can be found at entrance City Council chambers. Speakers will be limited time period of five minutes. First presentation we have is from State Assemblyman Stephen Choi.
Thank you, Mayor Nelson and council members, for allowing me today to make a legislative report to the Villa Park City Council and residents. I tremendously enjoyed the other day riding on the flatbed truck on the drive-by parade, and it was too dark to see many citizens, but hopefully, tonight, they can see me. I am Stephen Choi Assembly Member, representing the 68th District, which includes the city of Villa Park, Anaheim Hills, Orange, little bit of San Ana unincorporated area, Tuscon, parts of Irvine, and Lake Forest. So, that makes about seven different cities. It is such a privilege and an honor for me to represent my district in Sacramento. Prior to my election to the Assembly, I served at several local government levels, including City of Irvine, mayorship, city councilman, and also on the school board. Tonight, I am here to make a report regarding my legislative activities in Sacramento in the past year, since my swearing-in date, December 5, 2016. For this freshman legislator, it has been a totally new experience, and every day was filled with very fast-moving activities such as floor sessions, various committee meetings, and face-to-face individual meetings, mostly with the lobbyists, but sometimes with the visiting constituents from the district. Since my main job is to enact laws and to vote on the bills that are introduced by my colleague members of the Assembly and the Senate, let me focus upon them. As you know, the legislature is unfortunately highly divided by the partisan lines. As a member of the Republican Party, I quickly found out how frustrating it was when I realized that the super minority of Republicans had only 25 votes against 55 votes of the Democrats, which did not give the Republicans much power at all in passing or stopping certain bills, bills such as SB 1, so-called the gas tax hike. Nevertheless, I introduced a total of eight bills last year, and two bills passed both houses and were signed into law by governor. One bill was vetoed, although it was unanimously passed by both Assembly and Senate Houses. One died in the suspense file, and the three were made into two-year bill that require a little bit more time, so to speak, to cook. Two signed bills are AB 1412, which is a mixed area of Home and Association Board Members' liability, personal liability will be exempted, just like other residential Home and Association Board Members. AB 1094, that was to lower the fines that will be assessed by, for those who are bidding the freeway on-ramp red lights. Supposed to be is $35 instead of $100 fine in the regular intersections. It may sound very cheap, but it is not. Once you start adding quote-unquote, I understand it'll be somewhere four, $500. So, that was to re-certify the proper citation rather than assessing higher intersection red light bidding. And the two, the signed bills are those AB 1412 and then AB 1094. The one bill that was vetoed by the governor was AB 662, even though both houses, Assembly and Senate unanimously passed many committees that it had to go through even in the consent calendar. That was the system to track down, is restitution tracking system for victims of the crime. For not very convincing reason, it was vetoed, so I may have to try it again. The other one that was dead at the appropriations committee suspense file was AB 662. That one was to reduce business income tax for those who move into California, 17.5% of a tax, so that that will be incentive for people, for businesses to move back to California or existing businesses to expand their employment. However, that, again, for many political reasons, simply did not get out the appropriations committee. Some bills were made into two-year bills. I learned that the two-year bills allowed for those, that there are some objections from committee members or some committee members that will earn more time to work on. And that's AB 596, and that's victims' right to restitution, even if the defendant is sentenced to diversion programs, so rather than waiving the required restitution to the victims. AB 971 was a fine that should be more extensive and higher for people who drops cargo on the freeways and injuring and killing people. And it has a good chance next year, I'm working on the bill at this moment. AB 1046 is something to create more jobs in America, is so-called the Soju Bill. Any liquor named Soju manufactured in America will enjoy the same benefits like that can be sold with the beer and the wine license. AB 724 is a very necessary, important bill for me, and I think this will have a great support, but I need a little more time, and that one is so-called the redomestication of adopted children from foreign countries. Unfortunately, some parents neglect getting their paperwork documentation upon adopting children from foreign countries, that they did not provide necessary paper, and then later, they run into some kind of a law and then turn, turn out to be, become undocumented people and then get deported to the country where they came from, where they have no relatives, no language acquaintance at all. So, that was a very inhumane situation for people, some people even suicide for being deported back to the country of origin when they came here at a very early age, like less than a year, two years, or three years. Lastly, five resolutions were introduced, and all were successfully adopted by unanimous votes. I'm not going to go through all the, you know, resolutions, if anybody's interested, I can share that with you. Some people tell me how lucky I was, or I am, as a freshman legislator, to have managed this many bills signed, or at least with a good chance, and then also many resolutions passed. So, it does take a lot of bipartisan effort, making a good convincing relationship to, for my colleagues to trust me, and that the bill should be signed upon the merits, not by the partisan, like partisan reasons. Well, you may call it sometimes, you are very lucky, but in fact, yes, I may be lucky, but I and my staff members worked very hard to accomplish these bills passed and designed, and still have many good chances for the next year. I'm working on, for the new year, already formulating bill ideas for 2018, when we go back to Sacramento on January 3. I welcome your input from our City Council members, our citizens, our constituents. You may contact even myself and my district director, Carrie O'Malley, would you please stand? Carrie O'Malley's phone number is 714-665-6868, because my district is 68th district, so phone number is 665-6868, in 714 area code. If you'd like to make your input or have any questions. Mayor and council members, thank you very much for this opportunity for me to make the report to you, what I have done at the legislature, as a freshman legislator in the past year. Good night and Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Merry Christmas. Thank you.
Dr. Choi, thank you very much for participating in our boat parade that we had last week. I know you had a good time doing that, and I know it took a lot to bring you down here and then to come down again today. We certainly appreciate you representing us up there.
Thank you very much. Okay, now, I'd like to take the opportunity to recognize outstanding contributions of Villa Park residents on our respective citizen advisory committees. We're fortunate to have resident professionals who are very successful and have an incredible wealth of knowledge, who are willing to volunteer their time to help make Villa Park a better community. This evening, I'd like to present proclamations to the chairs of the respective committees. First is Investment Advisory Committee. This committee was first formed in 1995 as Committee of Professional, Finance Professional Personnel. The committee is charged with responsibility of advice with respect to the city's investments and investment portfolio strategy. Members of this committee are John Bogart, Brad Reese, Joe McCarthy, Harold Hewitt, Dan Carburg, with Lynn Doty as vice chair, and Bill Underwood as chair. The committee is assisted by the City Treasurer, Dennis Culli, Finance Director, Michelle Danaher, and the City Manager, Steve Franks. Myself and Mayor Pro Tem Bob Colacotta also on this committee. The committee investment strategy has increased Villa Park's investment income by $121,000, more than the previous investment strategy. The committee has advised the council on a pension rate stabilization program designed to pre-fund rising pension costs and reduce pension liabilities. Acceptance proclamation for this committee is Chair Bill Underwood.
Bill, just stick with the investment advisory, the driving the truck. We'll give you a few lessons next time, but you did a great job. Thank you.
Next is the City Schools Advisory Committee. This committee was formed around 2006. The purpose of this committee is to proactively address issues of Orange Unified School District, schools within Villa Park boundaries, maintain open and honest communication, and foster collaborative environment in order to resolve issues of mutual concern. Members of this committee are Nicole Jones, representing Villa Park High School, Kathy Simmons, representing Sarah Villa Middle School, Michelle Norman, representing Serrano Elementary School, Michelle Gonzalez, representing Villa Park Elementary School, and also Jill Culli, a volunteer, also with Kathy Mo Fat, Ed Howard, and Ron Eves from the Orange Unified School District. The committee is assisted by City Manager Steve Franks and Councilmember Diane Fassanelli and Chair Robbie Pitts on this committee. Some of the accomplishments of this committee is mounting and rotating festations in Villa Park Elementary School, mounting Villa Park High School Improvement Project, addressing traffic and parking enforcement schools, input on demolition of historic bell at Villa Park Elementary School, addressing student behavior at Town Center, assisting school-specific event issues, and coordination with the school resource officer. Acceptance proclamation for this committee is Chair Robbie Pitts.
I accept this on behalf of the committee. We're very, very fortunate to have the breadth and depth that we do on this committee, because I do think that they make a difference between our community and the interaction with the schools, and have a lot of influence on a daily, daily basis. They impact the children that live in this city. So, I want to thank all the committee members a lot for their work.
Thank you. Next is the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. This committee was formed in 2015. It's a committee of active and retired law enforcement officers. The purpose of this committee is to coordinate with the Orange County Sheriff's Department and Neighborhood Watch to assess crime prevention and traffic violation control issues, and provide recommendation enhanced programs to the council. Members of this committee, and some of them are here tonight, are Eric Reynolds, Mike Felix, would you stand, please, call your name? Mike, Eric Reynolds, Mike Felix, Richard Merg, Tom Dodge, Jay Wasserman, Ruben Abara, and John Whitman as chair. The committee is assisted by Wayne Suzell with the Neighborhood Watch, and Lieutenant Jeff Pucker with the Orange County Sheriff's Department, and City Manager Steve Franks. Mayor Pro Tem Colacotta and Councilmember Rosini are on this committee. Some accomplishments of this committee is reduce crime rate. You can see, Steve's put up a chart here, where you see in the dark green are the two areas that had a reduction in crime, which is Yorba Linda and Villa Park, where the remainder of... Is it dark blue? Okay, dark blue. Mine was green. I guess you're, yeah, dark blue. The dark blue one is where crime has been reduced in Yorba Linda and Villa Park, where crime has gone up in all other areas of Orange County since the formations committee. They've established a professional service responders program to increase patrol in Villa Park. A Villa Park resident provided funds for two vehicles for the professional service responders. The Sheriff's Department's also deployed decoy vehicles at recommendation of the Law Enforcement Advisory Committee. They work with Neighborhood Watch and Sheriff to increase residents' awareness and empower residents, and work with the Sheriff Department to stop ongoing construction burglary sites. Acceptance proclamation is Chair John Whitman.
If you don't mind, I'd like to have maybe Mike Felix and Wayne and Jay Wasserman come up with me.
Sure. Bring them all up. Last but not least is... Last but not least is the Infrastructure Management Committee. That was formed just this year. It's Committee of Professional Engineers. The purpose of this committee is to provide guidance to city manager and city council from resident professional engineers on matters concerning public works and infrastructure, capital improvement projects and maintenance and preventive maintenance program for streets, storm drain, stormwater drainage systems, wastewater sewer systems, public buildings, streets, right of ways, traffic control devices, trails, sidewalk curbs, and gutters. Members of this committee are Dave Moritz, Leanne Cababer, Bill Cababer, and Mike Uchela. The committee is assisted by the city manager Steve Franks and the city engineer. This committee will start functioning early 2008, since it's just recently been formed. Acceptance of proclamation for this committee is Mayor Pro Tem Colacotta.
Thank you, Mayor. And the infrastructure of our city is a foundation of our, physical foundation of our city, and the value of this infrastructure is estimated at about $10 million. With the exception of our sheriff budget item, this is the largest, maintaining our infrastructure is the largest budget item in our city, and hopefully this committee will help us do a better job and a more cost-effective job at maintaining this foundation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Now, I want you to know why this is something we should have done a long time ago. This is not entirely my idea. I got this, a recommendation from Fred Whitaker to provide some recognition to our citizen advisory committees. I'm glad he's here tonight to see it. So thank you, Fred. Next, we have presentation by the Orange County Sheriff's Department.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Mayor. Last month's crime report was pretty interesting. We've had an exciting time here in Villa Park, and we're going to talk about a few things, but I can assure you that we are back on track towards having a very low crime rate, approximately still 20% lower this year than the previous year. However, that being said, let's talk about November. We had a total of nine Part One crimes, which is usually about double where we're at, and there's a trend that was done by the media, what's known as flocking. And flocking is something that's really been going on for over a decade all over Southern California, but the latest that the Orange County Register has called it is flocking, and I think it pertains to something that we saw a small spike of in Villa Park. And the basis behind it is typically we see gang members from either the Inland Empire or the Los Angeles county areas coming to primarily Orange County to do what we would consider brazen daytime burglaries. Run up to the front door, smash the window, smash the door, steal what you can, run out, and flee the area almost immediately. Villa Park saw a small spike of that in the beginning of November. And we'll go through this, and then we'll talk about how it concluded, and then we'll talk about December to give you a preview of what we're looking at for that month. So it started on the 1st, on the 10,000 block of Ludwig. A suspect smashed a master bathroom window, and the loss was jewelry. On the same day, on the 9,000 block of Bryley, a suspect smashed a window and ransacked the master bedroom. Loss was just miscellaneous items. On the same day, on the 9,000 block of Smoke Tree Lane, a suspect smashed a window, entered a home, and took numerous items that were strewn in the house. On the 3rd, on the 9,000 block of Crestview Circle, a suspect smashed a sliding glass door, removed a safe and other miscellaneous items. On the 17th, we saw on the 18,000 block of Taft, a suspect entered an unlocked window of a house and took a camera and some GoPro items. On the same day, on the 19,000 block of Mesa Drive, a wallet was taken from an open garage. And then on the 18th, on the 10,000 block of Sycamore, a suspect entered an open garage, removed a laptop from an unlocked vehicle. And then the last one that we had was on the 22nd, on the 18,000 block of Abs Ranch. A suspect used pry tools to enter a house and took a safe and other miscellaneous contents. Now, as you know, as many of you saw on the news, on the 23rd, on the 19,000 block of Ridgeview Road, suspect attempted to burglarize a residence but was unsuccessful. This initiated a pursuit by deputies, which ended in the city of Anaheim during that pursuit. A pillowcase filled with laptops and other sort of items, including jewelry, was tossed from the vehicle, and those were related, collected to a burglary in Villa Park. Now, I will tell you, the termination of that pursuit, there were three suspects. Two of them expired at the scene. The one suspect who was alive was ultimately arrested and charged with murder for two counts and burglary. Now, that's a pretty tremendous spike of residential burglaries. What's interesting is we are down now to zero Part One crimes for the month of December in Villa Park. So we are definitely back on track, knock on wood, unless there's another spike the last few days of the month, but November was an interesting time. We think the crime trend has been mitigated, and we're not concerned about anything future at this time. That concludes my crime report. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Lieutenant? Thank you, Lieutenant.
Thank you very much.
Orange County Fire Authority, but I don't see anyone here for fire. What about the Villa Park Library? Come right on up.
I'm Samantha Smith, branch manager from the Villa Park Library, and I have a report for you tonight. So recent library happenings include a winter reading program that kicked off this Monday. It's an attempt to encourage people to read and visit the library during the month of December and early January, and if you read three books, you'll get a prize, an entry into a larger prize drawing. We started on Monday, and we've already had over 70 people sign up, so we are really excited about the response. We have, this program is sponsored by the Friends of the Villa Park Library. It's also sponsored by some community partners such as Lazy Dog Cafe, The Aquarium of the Pacific in Long Beach, and the Bowers Art Museum. Those are all community partners as well. We also kicked off a Villa Park Elementary School Library Card Campaign. We went on December 1st and talked to all the students at the elementary school. They all went home with an application and the promise that whichever classroom returned the most library card applications would get a pizza party in their classroom. So it's an exciting way to encourage kids to visit their local library, and the pizza party will be sponsored by the Friends of the Library as well. We started on Friday, December 1st, and we've had about 50 children return library cards. This month, we're up 25% for library card applications, which is great, so it's boosting our statistics as well. This month, the Friends of the Villa Park Library donated money for the purchase of new furniture and shelving. We're very excited about that, and the county will be contributing as well, supplying fresh paint and new data ports, allowing for better computer access and accommodating laptop and mobile devices. We're currently working with a furniture vendor to purchase the furniture, and we're really excited and looking forward to our new look. Coming up, we have a brand-new program. We, on December 16th at 10:00 a.m., we will be having a program called Reading with a Deputy, and deputies from OC Sheriff's Department will be joining us at Storytime at the Villa Park Library. They will read stories, talk about safety, and share what a deputy does to keep you safe. This program is free, and all children and families are welcome. We're very excited about this new program. Also in January, we will have author Sue Ann Jafarian. Sue Ann Jafarian is the critically acclaimed author of The Ghost of Granny Apple Mysteries, The Odalia Gray Mysteries, The Madison Rose Vampire Mysteries. This event will be held on Saturday, January 27th at 2:00 p.m., and books will be available for signing and purchase thanks to Mysterious Galaxy Bookstore. This program's free to attend, and no registration is required. Books are currently available at the Villa Park Library for checkout. Just a reminder, the library will be closed on Monday, December 25th for the Christmas holiday, and Monday, January 1st for New Year's Day. I wanted to give a library overview and provide some library statistics for people that are curious. So we're a five-day-a-week branch. We're open Monday through Thursday from 10:00 in the morning till 7:00 p.m. We're open Saturdays from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. and closed every Friday and Sunday. Each month, the Villa Park Library circulates about 4,500 items, which is great, I think, and we get about 4,000 to 5,000 people visiting every month, with an average of about 200 people visiting per day. Our busiest days are Mondays and Tuesdays. Every month, there's about 250 computer logins on our desktop computers, and each month, we answer approximately 1,000 reference questions. In addition to all the materials available at the Villa Park Library, users may request materials from any of the Orange County Public Library's branches and have it sent here for a quarter. If there's a book not available at the Villa Park Library or any of the county libraries, we can get it sent to us through interlibrary loan and get it from another library district, a college library, even another state. Currently, we have about, we get about five of these checkouts every single month. Currently, we have books checked out to Villa Park patrons that came to us by way of libraries in Seattle, Washington, Nevada, and as far as Florida, so it's exciting. We also currently offer Storytimes, a book club that meets at the library, and a monthly craft program in addition to all the other special programs I mentioned earlier. That's my report for this evening, and I thank you for your time, and I wish everyone a happy holiday.
Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the council member attendance reports. First is Orange County Muscatine Vet Control District, and their meeting is next week, so I don't have a report there. Next is Orange County Santerre District.
I attended the November 6th meeting of the Operations Committee, and again, we discussed routine matters dealing with the operation and maintenance of the collection system and the treatment process, and our next meeting of the board will be tomorrow morning, or excuse me, tomorrow afternoon.
Next is Orange County Fire Authority, and they're dark in the month of December, so there's no meeting this month. Next will be the Orange County Library Advisory Board.
No meeting.
Budget and Finance Committee, no meeting. Community Development and Public Safety?
No meeting.
Human Resources, no meeting. City Schools Advisory Committee?
No meeting.
Law Enforcement Advisory Committee?
No meeting.
Investment Advisory Committee, no meeting. Villa Park Community Services Foundation, I know they have a meeting every month.
Yeah, we do. Well, it's coming up next, actually tomorrow night. But I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank a lot of folks for a wonderful time at the Villa Park Boat Parade and also the senator. You know, a lot of behind-the-scenes work goes in to make those things happen. I think we had a shocked grand marshal who didn't, who was completely taken by surprise, and Pam, we thank you for leading the parade this year, along with Barry Dennis, one of our veterans who lives here in the city and served our country. I also want to thank Lieutenant Pucker and Sheriff Hutchins for your participation and help with the parade. I tell you, it was amazing. We had a lot of units here. We had a lot of support with volunteers and everyone else that was involved in the parade, not only in the logistics of the parade, but also participated in the parade. It was cool. We had horses here. We had the mounted team here, and it was, and the boat, and it was just amazing. And, you know, I called you and sent you an email, and I really do appreciate the help that you gave us to provide those people and the support mechanisms for that. I also want to thank OC Fire Department for their support of both events. You know, Andy, thank you very much, you're not here tonight. The driver that drove the fire truck for the senator, I think, was taken back in amaze by the senator. He'd never done it before, and it was just, it was amazing to see the smile on his face as much as I did enjoy seeing the smile on the little children's face when we pulled up, and he really got involved with it, and it was fun for him, and he just had great comments about it throughout the whole thing. We were very fortunate to host our past veterans that have served our country, along with past grand marshals and elected city officials here in City Hall prior to the parade. I'd like to thank my wife and Karen Kohn and Beth Riley for all the hard work to make that event very special. I think we had close to 60 people here honoring all those various and sundry folks that attended the parade, and a lot of them were able to get on the floats and go with us along with the Rotarians. Lastly, there are a couple of things that took place on the Halloween and the Boat Parade that I need to make the council aware of and bring to your attention under full disclosure. At the Halloween event, there was an incident involving one of the citizens driving the hayride and one of the residents that resulted in a claim to the foundation insurance company. It was less than $300 for the incident, as being worked through the insurance process and may require reimbursement from one of the parties involved. The second event was at the Boat Parade. The incident involved one of our trucks carrying the rotary team. There was a minor collision that was reported, and there were pictures received, and we're reporting the incident to the insurance company as well as, as well as for disposition. Doubtful this will either meet the deductible amounts as well, but actions are being taken in the direction of the insurance company. Halloween is a foundation insurance claim, I want to make that known, and the Boat Parade will be the city insurance, because we elected to put city insurance on the four vehicles because it was a city-sponsored event. There will also be reports filed in accordance with the laws and regulations, so there's no view of impropriety for anybody. So that's my report.
Thank you. Friends of Villa Park Library.
I was not well, so I wasn't there. Did you go to the meeting?
No.
Okay. We weren't able to attend.
All right. Next is Public Comment. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments. Do we have any?
I have no speakers for the public comments. I do, however, have a speaker for item number one when we get to that.
Well, our first public hearing is reviewed to waive the reading and full of all ordinance's resolution on the agenda.
Mayor, if I could go back, item number one would be the final draft of the strategic plan.
Final draft of...
Strategic plan.
Oh, final, I'm sorry, I missed, went right over that. Yeah, final draft of strategic plan. Jim will present it.
And we do have a speaker as well, so just so you...
Okay.
Mayor Nelson, members of the council. The first agenda item is to consider approval of the final draft of the strategic plan, which is in your materials. This is a result of work that you completed on September 19th and on November 30th, and the plan itself includes the city's mission, core values, vision, strategic priorities, core strategies to achieve those strategic priorities, and key success measures to measure progress. Consideration of this item does not include any fiscal impact to the city, and in the interest of time, I won't go through the documents, since all of you, I believe, are very familiar with the content, and it has been posted on the city's website for the past week, and so members of the public, I think, have had an opportunity to examine it as well. So at this point, I will either address questions from you or step aside so the public can address you. One thing that I should mention, and you have my deepest apologies for this, but on page 16, there are two little changes that need to be made to the key success measure that reads, "On a survey conducted annually..." That word instead should be "by" annually. Your wishes were every other year rather than every year. And then at the tail end of that sentence, and I can't understand how this happened because this was proofread three times by two people, we've got "City of Villa Park" repeated there. We just simply need to strike that. So those two changes do need to be included in our final copy.
Okay. You have a question?
No, no, no questions.
Any questions, Jim?
Mayor, we do have a speaker.
If not, we can bring the speaker.
Jim Riker.
Mr. Mayor, city council, I thought I would just need to remind you all that we're a small city with limited resources, and I look at the, I'm concerned about really wasting the money on this strategic plan. I believe we spent $15,000, and in all honesty, I read the summary, and I don't think you learned anything that you already did. And frankly, I just think it's a waste of $15,000. If you needed to have a summary like this, the city manager is quite capable of doing something like this. I say it's a small city. We don't need to fix things that are... We don't need to fix things that are not broken, and I'm concerned about spending money this way. It's just, it's just bothersome, bothersome to me. Limited resources and $15,000, you know, you say it's not a lot of money, but it's a lot of money for the City of Villa Park. So I hope that you learned something from this experience, and if we need it, fine. But if we don't, let's conserve our money for other projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion with the council? If not, do we hear a motion on this item?
So moved.
You're second?
Second.
Moved in second, so cast your votes.
That passes with a vote of three to two, with Councilman Fasenelli and Councilman Pitts voting no, and then the votes are reflected on the screen behind you.
Okay. Now can I go on to public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Our first hearing has reviewed away the full reading of all ordinance and resolutions on the agenda. Staff, please give the staff report.
Item number two is an effort to conduct a more efficient city council meetings. We do this each council, which is waiving the reading in full of the ordinance's resolutions and meeting minutes. We, with that, would recommend approval.
Councilmember, do you have any questions with staff? Does anyone here in the audience who'd like to speak on this? If no, send a discussion with the council. Do we have, do we have a motion on this matter?
So moved.
You have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, so cast your vote. Steve, would you please read the results?
That passes with a 5-0 vote.
Okay. Our next hearing is a conditional use permit, 2017-01. A request approved to permit the installation of one tri-sector small cell facility and two remote radio units to an existing Southern California Edison Joint Pole Authority. Own wooden utility pole located in northwest corner Villa Park Road and Center Drive within the public right of way near 18262 Evergreen Circle. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is a continuation of an item that was heard on November 28th regarding a facility, or a use of a pole at 18, adjacent to 18262 Evergreen Circle. After a brief discussion, you'll recall, at that meeting, city staff and the applicant, the city council unanimously voted to continue the use permit to the December 19th meeting to allow staff to meet with the applicant and Mr. Biller, who was the owner of the property directly adjacent to that. Ray Pasqua, our city planning director, is here to update you on the status of those meetings and our recommendation for this evening.
Thank you, Steve. The following morning after the city council meeting, city staff and the applicant, Mr. Anthony Serpa, visited the site of the existing wooden pole where the proposed small cell facility will be installed and took several pictures from various locations. We were also able to meet with Mr. Biller at his residence, specifically in the backyard of his property, where more pictures were taken. In short, Mr. Serpa and his team performed visual analysis utilizing the pictures that were taken from Mr. Biller's backyard as well as through an existing glass door on the first floor that faces the backyard. And based on the visual analysis, it was determined that the proposed small cell facility would be below the existing tree line that runs along the rear property line in Mr. Biller's property. So none of the equipment would be visible from Mr. Biller's backyard, or for that matter, from the rear glass door of his home. Last week, I met with Mr. Biller at City Hall to share the results of the visual analysis, and while he still expressed some reservations about it being visible, should he decide to trim the tree back, he really didn't have any more comments beyond that. I also informed him that, or he informed me that he wasn't going to be here this evening, he's out of state. And I did explain to Mr. Biller that the item would be coming back to city council tonight, and he provided no additional comment. In front of you are the plans that depicts the pictures that were taken, the visual analysis that was done, and as far as the location of the wooden utility pole and the equipment in relationship to the tree line. That concludes my report, and I'll be glad to respond to any questions this time. Mr. Serpa's also in attendance this evening to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
And I would also add that there's photo simulation pictures in there, so you'll see what it would look like. So with that, I think we would continue with our recommendation from last month, which is to approve the conditional use permit. We're available to answer any questions.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions?
I have some comments. We continued this based on the resident coming here and telling us that he didn't want to walk into his backyard and see a box that was going to be put on a pole.
Right.
He was very sympathetic, told us he lived there, and he didn't want to see that one he ate. And come to find out that this man doesn't live there. He lives in another state. He had just arrived here in the morning, and he's flipping the house. So we're here tonight, and we've spent a tremendous amount of money. Ray's been out there, the vendor's been out there, the staff's been working with them, and we're here tonight for somebody who stood in front of us and did not give us a complete picture of what his problem was. And I wish he was here tonight, because this would have been approved last month. But to come in front of five of us here and not tell us the truth is just appalling. So I needed to put that on the record. I hope he sells his house, it'll look nice. The box, you can't see it from the backyard, but there was absolutely no reason for him to sit in front of us and tell us he doesn't want to see a box while he eats dinner when the man had just flown in from another state. And that's why he's not here. So, wanted to put that on the record.
Any other questions from councilmembers? If not, is there anyone here to speak on this matter? If not, I bring it back to the council, any further discussion? If not, do we have a motion on this issue?
I'd like to make a motion to approve.
You have a second?
I'll second.
Been moved in second, so cast your vote. Steve, would you please read the results?
That passes with a 5-0 vote. Again, votes are recorded on the screen behind you.
Okay. Our next hearing is resolution to adopt residential guidelines for single-family residential development, including two-story residents and two-story additions. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is something that's worked its way through the Community Development, Public Safety Committee, and I will ask Ray Pasqua, our planning director, to give you the background on that.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. In general, residential design guidelines are a useful tool for property owners, architects, and home builders to provide a better understanding and grasp as to what the community's expectations are for when building a new residence or remodeling an existing one. What city staff has prepared is a comprehensive set of residential design guidelines, which includes recommended side yard setbacks for second story of a new residence and for second stories of an existing residence. The design guidelines also include, but is not limited to, building mass and form, building elevation treatments and roof design. It's important to note that these design guidelines are not property development standards, such as minimum building setbacks, maximum lot coverage, building heights, those sorts of things. That's all part of the zoning ordinance. We have that in place now, and that's not changing. The design guidelines are intended to provide a menu of design guidelines to direct and guide, again, builders towards the goal of achieving development that integrates well with the adjacent residents as well as the rest of the community. As noted in the staff report, if city staff and/or city council finds that these design guidelines needs to be amended or bolstered in any way to further the goals of the community and the general plan, then we'll bring it back to city council for review and consideration. These design guidelines, as Steve noted, went through the Community Development and Public Safety Committee on October 2nd to review the draft, and then on November 6th to review the draft with illustrated graphics. And then after the following, following the second meeting, city, the committee recommended that it be moved forward to a full city council for review and consideration. As required, city staff did post a notice of public hearing 10 calendar days before this meeting, and to date, staff has not received any comments for or against this item. And that concludes my report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions with staff?
I do have a question on the second story design, and it says that the open balconies are included in the footprint of the second floor, which means so, that they should, they're not going, the way this is written, the balconies cannot exceed?
Extend.
Extend, over the, over the wall, am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Has that been changed, or is this language what we've had?
We've always, we don't have any design guidelines today, so we've always encouraged builders to, to be sensitive about balconies extending where, such that, you know, it would impact privacy of adjacent properties, so.
Sure. Well, what I'm concerned with here is that this doesn't say specifically if you're, you've got a very large piece of property. If you have a small piece of property, and I'll, we'll give the example over, it's not small, half acre, across from Villa Park Elementary, that does impede upon the neighbor. But if they had a two-acre property or one and a half acre property, and they stuck a smaller house in the middle, we're telling them they can't have a balcony to reach out.
Right.
And there's no parameters here.
Yeah.
Coming from having no design guidelines to having something like, I mean, this, there's a, there's a lot of issues here. We're talking about colors, we're talking about window shades, we're talking about From going to zero to three pages, four pages of design guidelines, I'm a little, I'm a little sketchy here, because what it's telling us is that if you have a home and you have, say, single stories in your, in all your home, you want to put a second story in there, you need to make that, make your home look like everyone else is in your neighborhood. But I don't want to update my home to look like my neighborhood looks like. I want now to update it to have the Tuscany look like the other side of Villa Park has, which is called progression. And that's what's bothering me here. I'm not necessarily sure that we've had problems that's come to the city, or, actually, they haven't even come to this council, because I've been on here long enough, we've got seasoned people here, that we haven't received very many complaints. And we have a complaint about four homes. And I'm not sure if we need to penalize 2,000 homes for four people and really only two homes that we've had some complaint about. So I do have some issues here.
Okay.
With this, design guidelines are design guidelines. It means they can't do them without coming here, and they're only going to get more restrictive from that. So I'm not, it's not something that I feel that the majority of our residents would want. It is a stepping stone to an association. It's a stepping stone. It's not one, but it's one step closer than we've already had. If it was one page, that would be great. I'm also concerned about, you know, you're taking two feet away from a regular half-acre lot. It used to be 10 feet, now we have to be 12 feet, correct? If I'm going to build it. So there's no grandfathering in, am I right?
Well, again, these aren't property development standards, they're not codes.
They're guidelines.
These are just guidelines.
But they still have to come to council.
No, they would, they would not have to come to council, and it's not a, this is not an ordinance that they have to follow. This is the guidelines, as a reference tool, that this is our, as we've outlined them, and Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, these are simply reference tools for contractors or homeowners, or property owners, to say, you know, what, what's generally kind of what we should be doing or not doing, whatever. These are not restrictive and does not have to come here for a permit to, to the council to, to go something different.
Okay, so this is just a handout we're going to give to the contractor. There's, there's no law behind this, there's no penalty for this.
This is passed by resolution.
We cannot have, we cannot have a resident come in here and say, you know, he's got a balcony, and I want you to stop him. Or he's got a Wayne's coding, which is in here also, that I don't care for. We could just say, "Sorry."
That's correct. I mean, it's just, they're just guidelines.
Just guidelines.
Yeah. These aren't, these aren't mandated property development standards, like building setbacks and that sort of thing.
We would have to adopt by ordinance any sort of restrictive guidelines. These are sort of a reference tool for, you know, if you were to come in, we get these questions a lot. I mean, Ray gets a lot of the questions, what do you, you know, what do you guys look for, what are the kinds of things? And so this helps somebody who looks at our guidelines, say, "Okay, I kind of get what they're going." And they can say, "Well, we want to do something different." Okay, they can do something different, but it's not, you know, it's not totally absent a reference point, if you will. They have, they have the ability to do what they want to do without having to ask for a permit or come to the council.
It helps too with the upfront cost, so you don't go too far down the road. That's some guidelines, and you know, you'll hear things upfront, so that at least you can make judgment calls.
So maybe then, will there be some wording that says that these are only guidelines?
It'll say right across the top that it would only be residential design guidelines.
We could, we could certainly make that clear. We, we'll do, we'll do what we can to broadcast that.
Make it clear that this is not an issue that someone's going to go to, to the CDC with. It's not going to come to council, it's not going to come, you know, to a planning commission. They're just guidelines, it's a handout.
And I would, I would make that clear, that we do get these questions on a pretty regular basis, so they'll come in and say, "Well, what do you guys look for? What, what's the, you know, what's, you know, and it allows, it's a starting point for conversations, it allows people like Councilman Pitts says to say, okay, you know, a sort of a reference point." And that's, it's a, it's not restrictive in the sense that they can't do something.
And I think that's great, and then I want to make sure that on the other end, though, you have the neighbor who comes in here and says, "He did, you know, this person built this, and you need to stop him." So it works the other way also.
Well, if, if the council would have to do that, we'd have to adopt a whole ordinance and go through another process to establish those. So at this point in time, the neighbor would come in, and we'd have to say, "Sorry, he has a right to do what he did."
Okay.
Is anyone here to speak on this hearing? If not, I bring it back to the council, any further discussion? If no discussion, could I hear a motion on this item? You have a second?
Second.
The movement?
With the added language?
Yes, we'll make it, we'll make that a point.
Okay.
Motion is second, so cast your vote. Steve, would you please read the results?
That passes by a 5-0 vote. Again, votes recorded in behind you.
Okay. Our next hearing is Resolution Number 2017-3409. A resolution of the City Council of City of Villa Park declaring its intent to conduct a public hearing regarding conditions present at 18592 Mendocino Circle, Villa Park, California, to determine what such conditions constitute a public nuisance. Staff, please give the staff report.
You'll recall, this was heard at our November 28th meeting, in which we had a lengthy discussion with the homeowner, or the property owner. We have not received any, or had not had any significant progress. We believe we still go forward with it, and are, we have been in contact with him over the last 30 days, but we, again, have not seen any significant progress. So in the interest of moving forward at this point, we would recommend that you approve this, and we continue, but we have the opportunity with the full force of the council's backing to go forward and speak to him and take action if necessary.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions with staff? If not, is anyone here to speak on this, this issue? If not, I bring it back to the council, any discussion regarding this item?
I'd just like to say, this, this resident has given, was given an opportunity to speak before the council. We heard him at length discuss his troubles, and yet we still have not seen any movement or action. I think it's time for us to send the unfortunate message to him that you have to work with city staff, you have to work with our residents, and you have to get projects done within a reasonable amount of time, and I think we need to act tonight. Thank you.
Okay, with that, do I hear a motion on this matter?
So moved.
You have a second? Moved in second, so cast your vote. Steve, the results?
That passes on a 5-0 vote.
Now we consider the consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered routine and usually enacted by one motion, approved and recommended action listed on the agenda. Any member of the city council, staff, or the public may request an item be removed from consent calendar for discussion or separate action. Councilmembers, is anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
Yes, sir. Number 11.
Number 11?
Number 11.
Okay.
No, no, I didn't speak, I'm sorry.
Staff, is there anything you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
No, sir.
Our public, is there anything you'd like to pull? Our public, is there anything you'd like to pull? So if not, I have agenda item number 11 pulled from the consent calendar, most approve the bouncing items?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, cast your vote. Steve, read the results?
Passes with a 5-0 vote.
Okay, Councilmember Pitts pulled number 11, would you like to?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Should I read the item, just for clarification, so that we, item number 11 is the consideration of the 2018 city council meeting schedule.
I just have one comment about it, can someone help me with the reasoning to move the council meeting on September, our September meeting from the 4th Tuesday to September 18th?
That is consistent with this year, I believe, accommodations were made last year with council approval to adjust the schedule to allow for attendance at the special district conference, I believe that's a similar situation would occur this year, so an adjustment was made in advance, but we're certainly willing to work with the preference of the council.
So, so is September the 18th is when it, when it is?
The September the 18th would be the council meeting, and that's, would be the third Tuesday of the month instead of the fourth, because the fourth meeting would conflict with the special district statewide meeting, I believe.
What puts this special council or special district meeting over my birthday?
Over your birthday?
My birthday. I mean, I, my wife will kill me if I, if I'm sitting in council during my birthday, okay? I mean, was any consideration given to that, Steve?
No, sir, I wasn't aware it was your birthday.
Okay, well, now we're aware, so is there another date we can pick so that we can accommodate special districts? Then I don't know that we, we see a lot of benefit from, but I'll defer that.
I simply, we simply, very candidly, just were consistent with the current year's schedule, but I'm certainly willing to, whatever date you want to do, we can change that schedule in September, we can obviously do it the week up prior, or whatever the preference of the council would be.
You know, we, we all, five sitting up here, give a lot of our personal time and so forth to this, and I just ask that birthdays and anniversaries and things like that not be considered as time away from home and away from your family, that's my only, my only concern, and it's not just about me, but this happens to be my birthday on September the 18th.
We're willing to change for your birthday, that's no problem.
But, I mean, I'm, we need to take that into consideration, maybe...
Tell us when you want to do it.
I, I was fine with the regular date.
No, it's not, we're not going to do it on a regular date.
Oh, okay.
I'd like to speak, this came up last year also, we are not a special district, in fact, we have nothing to do with special districts, I appreciate that, Bill, you're involved in that, but that has nothing to do with the city at all. I have conventions that I go to, that has nothing to do with the city, and I don't involve the council with it. We're a city that has a council meeting on the 4th Tuesday of the month, we make our calendars that way, we make our vacations that way, and to change that for a council person, because they want to go to an annual convention of another organization that doesn't have anything to do with the city, is silly, I mean, we've got 6,000 residents, I'm not sure why we're changing it, you did it last time, it really does mess up the staff, it messes up the residents, and there's no reason for it, at all, we, if you can't make the council meeting, no one says, you know, we don't get docked our pay if you don't make it, the council meeting, don't have to do it, make it a light agenda, but to change the consistency does change the calendars, and the residents should know when their council meetings are, and for personal reasons, we shouldn't change it. Now, granted, you're having a baby, you're sick, whatever, we can change it, or quite frankly, if you want to play games, don't show up, and there's no quorum, but have the council meeting when we state it's going to be, since this particular issue has nothing to do with the city of Villa Park.
I, I beg to differ, both Bob and I sit on special districts that we were appointed to by this council, and we want to fully participate in special district activities, as well as city activities, so you, you appoint us to these special districts.
I, you know what, Bill, I did not appoint you to it, and last year, Bill was...
We said it has nothing to do with the city, it does have something to do with the city.
That's a vector control.
Right, vet control and sanitation district.
Right, well, if vector control has a convention, you can go, but this is the Special District Association, which you were president last year, and now I'm sure you're on committees, and it's just, it's, there's no reason. We have a special district, which is Serrano, and they don't even receive any money from the property taxes. Eight percent of our property taxes go to special districts, I'm sure that no one knows about that, because it's this little, little secret that, that people don't know about, but Serrano gets zero money, zero out of that, so it doesn't affect the city.
Serrano getting zero money has nothing to do with this issue at all.
It does.
No, it does not.
Why are you, why do we have to change our council meeting for you to go to a convention?
If both myself and Bob.
Well, last year, it wasn't Bob.
It wasn't Bob, it was Bob last year, he went to it last year.
Yeah, it went on behalf of the town sanitation district.
Well, I did not, I did not appoint you to the Special District Association, you're, that has nothing to do with the city, vector control is a special district. If you want to go to special district items, you should be going to Serrano Water Board's meeting every month, that's a special district, but you don't go to those, and that directly, directly affects us. I would like to keep the council meeting on the, on the 4th Tuesday of the month. If you can't make it, I appreciate that, I have come here on days that were not convenient, I've had people in this audience tell me, if I can't make it, too bad. In fact, I've even had people tell me, make your choices, I'm asking you to make your choices, I made mine.
Robbie, we're willing to move it anywhere you want to, particularly where you tell us where.
Well, like I said, I, why not just keep it consistent with everything else?
No, it's not, not going to be on that day, give me another day, if you want to do it, want to do it the 2nd Tuesday, you want to do it the 4th Wednesday?
The February council meeting conflicts with my birthdays, but I plan on being here.
Okay.
Okay.
Yes.
I'll call for the question, or let's see, I'll make a motion that we approve the council meeting schedule as proposed.
I think we should give Rob an opportunity to move it off his birthday.
No, it's okay.
You sure?
Why not move it a week, why not move it a week? Is there an issue with moving it a week? Because I've had to miss a family member's very, very important birthday, and that didn't go over too well, and I don't think anybody should have to do that, and since we are looking forward, if there is a conflict, move it a week, out of respect for all parties here.
Steve, is there a good time to move it from the 18th to...
You know, Will, the, the council has priority on these chambers, so to the extent that they want to have any day, we could obviously make adjustments to somebody else. September 11th, we'll make it do, I mean, the issue is, the extent you move them closer to August, there's not a whole lot of time between meetings, and so there's not necessarily, we have to file 10, you know, in advance, so it, there's, you know, process to get those approved and...
What about towards October?
The 20, I'm sorry, the, my math is going to be, what is it, the 24th?
So we had this, I'm sorry, so I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon, I beg your pardon, it's the opposite direction.
So that would push us, right.
I beg your pardon.
And that was the conflict, I think that, that whole week was a conflict, or part of that, or a large part of that week, if I'm not mistaken, so, I, again, I'll have the schedule in front of me, we could go September 19th, we could go September 20th, we can meet Saturday afternoon.
September 19th, would that work for you?
I can do it.
Yeah, I see, I see.
Staff says no on Saturday afternoon, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Would that work for you?
What's that?
September 19th.
Would it work to be consistent, but that doesn't seem to be on the program tonight, so we all pick a date, the 18th, we'll do it.
Could you amend your motion to, to make the change from the 18th to the 19th? Did someone make a motion to approve this?
Yes, I did.
Would you be willing to do that?
Sure.
You will?
Yeah.
Is it okay with the second?
Anybody else have any conflicts on the 19th that they can forecast out this far?
I don't have any conflict on the 19th.
I don't have any conflicts.
Oh, is that okay with the second?
It is.
Okay, then moved in second, so okay, cast your vote then. Steve, read the results.
We have one still voting. Okay, we have a three to two vote pass with Councilman Fasenelli and Councilman Pitts voting no.
Our new business, our first item is resolution support to California Water Fix and California Eco Store. Staff, please give the staff report.
You'll recall that this was an issue raised by Mr. Larry Dick when he was at, he did a special presentation of the city council that was arranged by Councilman Fasenelli, and I want to say September, but I may be wrong, I can't remember what month, but he came here, anyway, basically, the, the Delta, his comments of the Delta...
October.
October, okay, the Delta provides approximately 30% of the water supply in Southern California, and after doing some modeling, the California Water Fix is basically a way to improve Orange County's water supply reliability over the next 25 years. They've done an analysis, and it would prevent future loss of approximately 440,000 acre feet per year on average of water, so that more than 100 alternatives were considered over a 10-year study period, and it drew 30,000 public comments before the water fix was recommended. So basically, the California Water Fix, for, for those who are not familiar, involves construction design of three new water intake, intakes north of the Delta, and the two, 32-mile, 9,000 CFS underground tunnels that will provide operational pumping flexibility to protect against water supply. The companion initiative is the Eco Restore, which basically is, helps to restore 30,000 acres of restoration efforts in the Delta area, which would allow for continued, basically to keep the system intact. The, it would restore tidal and non-tidal wetland habitat for natural wildlife and improve connectivity of grasslands and other national habitats. The proposed improvements in assisting conveyance, staff are recommending that, that the city council adopt a support position for the, both the Eco Restore and the California Water Fix. This is something that both Serrano Water District and, and I want to say Modoc, the Metropolitan Water District of Orange County, approved, and this is adding our support measure to that, so just adopt a resolution just in support of that activity.
Is it, any council members, any questions, the staff? Not, is anyone from the audience like to speak on this item? I'll bring it back to the council for any discussion. If there's no discussion, do you have a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, cast your vote.
Passes with a 5-0 vote.
Our next item of new business, the Mesa Henderson Storm Drain Temporary Repair Project Contract Award. Staff, please give the staff report.
You'll recall that just about a little over 11 months ago, January 21st, the city had, we experienced a collapsed storm drain on Mesa Henderson on a property where we had the easement, on a private property where the city had an easement. The city council last closed session on November 28th, improved some temporary measures to allow us to move forward through this rainy season and finalize the design for the completion. We received proposals from three different contractors with the alternative, the temporary ranges between, the temporary measure costs ranging between 76,000 and 137,000, so we are recommending approval of the 76,000, and very candidly, we have completed the work, so at this point, in lieu of worrying about the storms, what we were worried about, we've completed it, but we would request approval or ratification of the contract and moving forward, so, this is consistent with the direction given in closed session on November 28th.
Councilmen, any other questions, the staff?
I have one question, Steve, there seemed to be such a wide, such a wide difference between the bids?
Yes.
And was there any particular reason why that was such a widespread, usually, you know, a lot of times you see them fairly close together, and you take the lower bidder, but the 76 is almost half of what the highest bidder potentially was.
It was the, the level and amount of reinforcement up the walls that they were recommending, so we specifically asked that question, but we are not fully enclosing anything, at this point, it's still open, but they need to do some reinforcement, so the amount of, of material that they were going to have to put in there drives that up astronomically, and then they were also had that length to put in, so candidly, it's the, the amount of extra material on, and the thickness of the material they wanted to put on the wall. Based on our engineering study and the studies being done by the consultants on this, we believe that the lower level would be sufficient to accommodate a temporary storm and last us three years if we did nothing else. We don't believe we need to go any further than three years, we believe we'll have the permanent work done at that time, so we don't need to put it in for a more permanent, longer-term solution at this time.
Typically, when you see things like this, it's often causes concern, because then there comes change orders and things after the fact, they raise the cost back up to somewhere close to where it was before, I've seen vendors take that kind of approach in the past, I just wanted to make sure that there, we looked at the differences and...
Yes, we did look at the difference, and candidly, the work is done, so we know the change orders are minimal at this point, there's nothing done, so, we, we had the engineer out there onsite every day, watching it to make sure it was done to, in accordance with what we wanted and how we wanted, so that we didn't get hit, exactly like you say, with some sort of change order saying, oh yeah, we had to do it this way or that, so, I appreciate the, the thoughts, and I think we're right, you're right on where we were thinking when we did this, so.
Okay, thank you.
Is anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Yes.
Pam Dunn, Hazel Circle, was that the entire cost for that repair? That seems so minimal.
No, I would ask that, that is the temporary measures that will allow us, in the event of a rainstorm, it's an open culvert at this point, so there's going to be continued erosion, in fact, there has been some erosion anyway, just simply of wear and tear, it's open, it's pit, it was never designed to have reinforced sides, so in the rain coming down, the worry is that this becomes even more dangerous, and it could creep into and create some structural problems for the residents, or anything like that, it does, it isn't now, because we put in some measures, so this is basically reinforces, so that the rains come at the level they're anticipated for this year, we're not going to experience any further damage and have a greater cost for the repair. The actual repair is closer to 800,000 for the full repair.
So who's paying for that?
We are working right now with FEMA, though FEMA's not as, as, they have not formally notified us, they will probably not be funding at least in, in, in full, or in part at this point, we're not real sure what they're thinking, and then we also have, for the private property damage, we'll have our insurance claim that will be providing some funding for that as well, so it's going to be the city, very candidly, the city's general fund, and whatever we can eke out of FEMA, which appears very bleak at this point, but we are hoping our best, and then we'll have an insurance claim with our Cal JPIA, which is our insurance agency.
And how much was anticipated for them to pay?
I, I don't know, and I'd hate to venture a guess, I can certainly get that to you, I just, I don't want to just take out a turn and have the wrong numbers and say something that's not, for the record, that wouldn't be the right number.
And Pam? I'm, thank you, and I think there's unfortunately three reasons why things are not quite as rosy as they were Houston, Miami, and Puerto Rico.
True, I mean, this is a big bill.
Big issues, big issues.
Oh, they are.
I just want to clarify for the public, the JPIA insurance claim is kind of like your homeowner's insurance, it's going to be for property damage, it's not going to pay for the storm drain, the storm drain, the, you know, 780,000, 800,000, that's coming, that will come out of our checking account for the city when that happens, that is not an insurance claim.
This would be personal property damage, that, there's a tennis court that goes over it, and there's a, so there's, there's questions about whose responsibilities we're working through, but there is a koi pond that was damaged, and there's some other...
Yeah, or fencing, and, you know, just like, you know, when, when you have a flood at your house, so, but the factual storm drain is not an insurance claim, if FEMA tells us no, which is what we're looking at, that's going to come out of our checking account, that we have to fix that.
Amazing, okay.
And that's, that's what we save it for.
All your councilors, any discussion regarding this item? If not, do you have a motion on this matter?
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Then moved in second, cast your vote. Steve, give us the results.
That passes with a 5-0 vote, thank you.
We'll now discuss the city manager's report.
As, as I've done consistently in the past, I've provided you a matrix of all the projects, I like to think that I'm making headway, but candidly, at times, there are more items added than are taken off or shown as completed, but they are, keep us quite busy. I would also add, that's not listed here, Michelle Danaher will be leaving us, January 3rd is her last day as finance director, excuse me, we have, I have a replacement that will be starting January 5th, who has starting training actually tomorrow, his Frank Davies... be starting January 5th, who has starting training actually tomorrow. His Frank Davies, a very well-qualified candidate that's worked with the county auditor controller for the last 33 years. He's got an MBA and a CPA, very well-qualified, and candidly, I have a very strong trust and confidence in he's the right guy for the right job. So I'm, I would announce that here, it's not in here, but people have asked, and the training will happen, and Michelle has offered to stay an extra two weeks to do a training because this is one of those things where as a one-man shop, you need as much transference of knowledge as we can get. So Frank is taking time, personal time from his current job. He's vacationing or doing sick leave or whatever he has to do, and coming over and training with Michelle on his own nickel. So, or dime, or whatever we're paying him. But anyway, candidly, we're very fortunate to bring him on. He is, right now, he's head of the property tax unit for the auditor controller of the county, so he's the one that calculates the property taxes for every tax rate area in the county of Orange. He is extremely knowledgeable and is the person that Michelle used to call for questions on a lot of accounting. So we're very fortunate to bring someone of this caliber here, and I'm very pleased to be able to report that to you this evening.
Thank you for that report, Steve. Next, we will now discuss the appointment of the city's designated representative of the Orange County Fire Authority Board Directors. Staff, please give the staff report.
This is, the Fire Authority has asked that they provide by resolution the representative as to the OCFA Board of Directors, and currently, it has been Mayor Nelson that served in his capacity, but he has informed me that he is not, not desirous of making, having this appointment next year in 2018. So we would need to adopt a resolution, and the Fire Authority has asked that we provide them this information by the end of December. So it is in deference to the city council what their preference might be.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions with staff? Does anyone in the public like to comment on this item? If not, I bring it back to the council for discussion regarding this item? If not, do you have a motion on this matter?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Vince Rosini as the Director of the Orange County Fire Authority. Vince is a dedicated public safety professional, and he's a decorated professional peace officer. He's founding chairman of our law enforcement advisory committee, and he volunteered to lead the development of our disaster preparedness program, which will require some coordination with the Fire Authority. I think Vince will be an outstanding representative to the Fire Authority, and again, I'd like to nominate him.
I'll second that. So please cast your vote. Steve, read the results.
That passes on a four to one vote with Councilman Fasenelli voting no.
Before we go into council member items, Steve, is it protocol that you can have reconsideration of an item either in this meeting or the next meeting?
I believe, and the city substitute city attorney will have to correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe during the course of an existing meeting, you can reconsider an item as long as the meeting has not been adjourned at this time, I believe. Is that's correct? So to go correct, we would have to re-agendize an item that were addressed in a previous meeting. So you could, you can reconsider it, but you have to regendize that.
Re-agendize.
You have to be in the, I thought our municipal code says you have to be in the majority to reconsider it.
Yes.
I mean, so you have to have been in the majority to...
Yes, I'm just about to get to that point. Thank you. You're ahead of me, Councilwoman.
Okay, thank you. Now it's time to hear from individual council member information. I am starting with Councilmember Rosini. Do you have any reports or comments to share?
I just wanted to reach out and say thank you to the Community Services Foundation and all the volunteers that put on the Santa Tour. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend. I had to serve two roles, both as dad and mom that day. My wife came down with strep throat. It has taken its toll on my entire family, and I apologize for not being able to be there. It's something that I look forward to. I really enjoyed last year. I was, however, able to attend the boat parade, and it was a fabulous event. It was, it was everything that you could hope for as a councilperson, as a resident. I enjoyed being there and seeing so many faces lining our streets, and just want to wish everybody happy holidays, Merry Christmas, and God bless to all you and your families, and please stay healthy. There's quite a flu bug going around and strep throat, so don't hesitate, get yourself checked out.
And get your flu shot.
And definitely get your flu shot.
If you haven't had it already.
You should have already had it.
Mayor Pro Tem Colacott.
Okay, on November 12th, I attended the Orange County, participated in the Orange County Plan for Aging Senior Transportation Subcommittee, and we reviewed several alternative transportation systems that are programs that are being implemented, both in Orange County and in Riverside County. Ultimately, we're looking, the committee is looking to develop a recommendation for some alternative senior transportation programs throughout Orange County. Of course, on December 9th and 10th, I was greatly fortunate and pleased to participate in the Santa Tour and the annual Villa Park Boat Parade. In my view, the compensation for being on city council is being able to participate in these two events. I think they're just wonderful, and I think they help really define the, how special our city is. And I'd like to thank everybody involved in the Community Services Foundation for sponsoring those two events, and I'll look forward to participate in or watching them in the future. Finally, on December 13th, I attended Assemblyman Stephen Choi's open house in Irvine. It was a wonderful event, met some good people, great people. In fact, I was particularly pleased to meet the gentleman who designed the mixed-use housing in, on Prospect Avenue in Tustin, which is kind of a unique development, and I've learned a little bit about that from him. So thank you very much for inviting me to your open house.
Councilwoman Pitts?
Well, unfortunately, I've been under the weather for the last three weeks, so I didn't do much attending. I would have enjoyed some holiday cheer because it's been the opportunity to network and to also, you know, share the holidays with a lot of good folks. But I want to wish the residents of Villa Park a very, very Merry Christmas, Happy Hanukkah, Happy Holidays, and I hope everyone stays safe and has a great time this holiday season. The only other thing I want to bring up is, and I want to go on the record so that we understand consistency from my perspective, I voted no on the strategic plan tonight, and I voted no because I've voted no since day one. When I, when I sat down early on in the process, and even as much as last week, when I compared the two strategic plans, one that was done by team members and teaming here on the city council along with the staff to develop, and one that we spent countless hours and $15,000 to prepare, I see very little difference between the two documents, and I think we could have brushed this one off and done quite well and used that $15,000 somewhere else. So I just, I want you to understand why I voted no, because it's consistent with my direction in the beginning, when I said we shouldn't be spending the money. But it's done now, and I just, I just wanted to bring it up for the record. Thank you.
Councilman Fasenelli?
It's been a light month, but I'd like to bring something positive to this month. And Steve, if you could tell us about the award that we received today. That has to do with our budget and has to do with our finance director.
Today, we received, I believe yesterday in the mail, but I opened it today, we received from the Government Finance Officers Association, which is a nationwide, actually larger than that, the government finance officers, we received a distinguished budget presentation award. It's quite a, it's basically as elevated an award as you can get for budget presentation. It is quite distinguished, and it is something that is not given out. Very candidly, I used to do rating for those, so I would see all the budgets to get rated. Not everybody gets them. It isn't, just turn it in and you get something. So it is an award that we received. They also give an award for, they give a certificate to the person who's deemed primarily responsible. In this case, Michelle Danaher received an award and a certificate, and rightly so, she is the one that handles the preparation of the actual document that you all approve. While you approve the, all the numbers and you approve all the projects and things, she puts it all together in a format and in a presentation manner that basically meets the standards that are beyond nationwide, but a tremendous accomplishment. She, this is not the first time it's been received, but it's been a pretty regular occurrence. Every time that our budget has been presented for such an award, it is received the award. So that's what we, so we're very proud of it, and it's something I think the council should be quite proud of. In the name of transparency, it means that your budgets are being presented in a way that everybody can read them and that they're very, very open and fully disclosing all your financial conditions. So I would, very proud, and thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah, and I'm very proud also, and it's very important to know that we have had this award several times. Michelle's worked very hard. She's been here.
10 years.
10 years, 11 years, and we're losing her. And she would be our second key person that we've lost in a year, and Steve has been a wonderful city manager this year. Thank you. But it's something that I want to make sure that this council understands, that in less than a year, we've lost our two key employees. We don't have very many employees. There's not a third key employee. Sorry, Ray. We have other employees, but two key employees in less than a year for our small city. So I hope going forward that we're able to retain our staff and we keep the staff at a level that we've had in the past because I'd love to receive this award every month. I'm looking forward to having a new person come in. Again, our finance director is a part-time position. I think he's got big shoes to fill, and I'm confident that you have the right person. But the workload on your report to us seems to be growing. So it's something I'm cautious for, certainly coming up in the new year. Wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, very Happy Hanukkah, Day Kwanzaa, and anything else that you want to celebrate with your family. Hug them, kiss them. Sun comes up in the morning, but sometimes it doesn't. So remember what this time is for, and thank you very much for allowing me to serve you.
Just finally, we have lost two key people in the past year. But in my opinion, the first one that we lost, what we got is a much better city manager than what we had before, greatly, much, much better. And I would expect, given what Steve has told me about the replacement for Michelle, I think it's even going to be even better as well. So I think of nothing other than we upgrading our staff by these key turnovers. And the other thing, I just want to thank the Villa Park Community Services Foundation for the great Santa Tour they did and our boat parade they did. I enjoyed them both. And with that, now it's time for me to, the council address election of mayor and mayor pro tem for 2018. With that, I'll turn the meeting over to the city clerk.
Okay, I'm going to, just briefly, I'll read over the process so that those who are watching might have a chance to understand what we're going to do. I'll basically declare the offices of mayor and mayor pro tem vacant. We'll, I'll accept nominations initially for the office of mayor. The members who are nominated need not be recognized to make a nomination, and no second would be required. Sometimes a second will happen, that's fine, but they're not required. When there is no one else wishing to make a nomination, I'll verify that all responses and all nominations. So potentially, there could be numbers of nominations. After we're received, we'll take votes. All votes will be taken by a roll call, and the vote, if there are more than one nomination, the votes will be taken in the, in the order in which they were received and recorded. So for instance, those in favor will work through the order of the thing. As soon as one of the nominees receives a majority of the votes, in this case, three, he or she is declared elected, and no votes are taken on the remaining nominees. It is important to note that one person can vote on for themselves. That's not prohibited in any way, shape, or form to vote as for yourself as one of those. Once the mayor has been elected, I will return the council meeting back to the new mayor-elect, who will conduct a vote for the mayor pro tem in the same manner in which we just conducted it for the mayor. So with those being the game rules, we're going to...
I would like to go ahead and nominate...
Well, let me declare, let me, the city clerk has to declare the offices of mayor and mayor pro tem are vacant.
I would like to nominate Mayor Pro Tem Bob Colacott for mayor for the upcoming term.
Steve?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to offer nomination for Mayor Villa Park. In my opinion, the mayor position is one that should be earned through the service to the community and to those that support our city. The mayor's position is not one that's considered next in line, and one that is due to you because you've served on the council or is considered your turn, as some have pointed out to me in person, and I've read on Facebook, unfortunately. In my opinion, you should earn the position, not expect it or just be given to you because you think it is your turn. Service is important to the success of this city and to help those that live, live here, lead a quality of life in our city. So with the choices I have available to me here on the dais, I would like to place Vince Rosini into nomination for the mayor position tonight.
Do we have any other nominations? So I'm going to close the nominations, going once, going twice? Okay. All right. So with that, we'll be voting on Mayor Pro Tem Colacott, and then Councilman Rosini in that order will vote one all the way through, and then we'll vote by roll call for that, and then Vince, Rosini, Councilman, whoops, sorry, didn't mean to call you by your first name, for the second. Okay, so with that, the maker of the motion for Mayor Pro Tem Colacott as the next mayor would be Vince Rosini, who would take the first vote. And your vote?
For mayor, Bob Colacott, Mayor Pro Tem, Bob Colacott, excuse me.
That would be an aye.
An aye, thank you.
That would be an aye. Okay. Then I'll go to Mayor Nelson.
Aye.
Then I'll go to Mayor Pro Tem Colacott.
Aye.
Then I'll go to Diana, Councilwoman Fasenelli, again, my apologies for calling by her first name.
No.
And Councilwoman Pitts.
No.
So we have a new mayor-elect, and that would be Councilman, Mayor Pro Tem Colacott will assume. So I would ask that he and Mayor Nelson change seats so that we can finalize the next...
I'll be yours next.
Okay, thank you. I'd now like to open the election of...
The nomination, you'd open up, the mayor pro tem is now vacant because you've just vacated it. So you would open it up for nominations and receive them, and we'll record the who you receive.
Okay. So I open up the nominations for Mayor Pro Tem.
I'll nominate Vince Rosini.
Any others? Nominations? Okay, with no further nominations, so...
Then you would call a roll call vote, and I'll take the call for you if you're okay with that.
Okay.
So that would be, I've got your name tags messed up, so I've got to...
Okay.
So Councilman Nelson.
No, Councilman Nelson?
Aye.
Councilman Pitts?
Yay.
Councilman Fasenelli?
No.
I'll vote yes. Councilman Rosini?
Aye.
Okay, so we have a mayor pro tem, so I would ask that Mayor Nelson move again.
Steve, before we close the meeting, I want to have reconsideration on an item we had tonight.
We'll have to defer to the mayor, to the new mayor who's conducting the meeting at this point. So you'd have to identify what meeting, what item you want to reconsider.
I want to reconsider the meeting schedule.
That's item number 11?
Yes.
That, as you recall, we, on a three to two vote, was approval of September 19th. Otherwise, the staff recommendations for all items were placed, so...
I'm going to make a motion to go back to the regular schedule we had in the agenda.
Which is...
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
Does it need public comment?
Any public comment?
Well, I believe before you entertain public comment, you would want to get a second.
Okay.
Otherwise, the motion would lack, would die for lack of...
Is there a second for the motion? I'll second the motion?
Now you can open.
No, this, the item up to public comment? Okay, hearing none, I'll open up to council comment.
So you want to, this motion is to go back to having the meeting on September 18th? Am I correct?
That's correct.
And just so I get my memory right here, is that the birthday? I just want to make sure. I've got my dates wrong. I got a little confused there.
I'll tell you, it's the birthday, but I changed it from the birthday, and he still voted against it. I'll tell you, it's the birthday, but I changed it from the birthday and he still voted against it. So why, why did we change it then? If he still voted against it? He had the opportunity to vote for it, you know, for the change, but he didn't.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure, I, I just want to make sure I understood.
You, you're right.
What, what was hap, what was happening.
It's okay.
Okay.
It's just a, a little game that was played.
I can celebrate my birthday anytime, it's okay. No, that's right, I can't do that.
I'll celebrate mine here, council on February twenty eighth. Okay, uh, if there's no further, uh, uh, comment, I'll, uh, like to hear or, uh, see a vote. So.
What's the, what's the motion?
Uh, the motion is to, uh, adopt the proposed sched, the staff proposed schedule of.
The presentation as scheduled originally, which would be in this instance, switching it back to September nine, uh, eighteenth.
Yes.
From the nineteenth.
And that's a Tuesday?
Yes.
It is a Tuesday. That would be the third Tuesday in the month of September as opposed to the fourth.
Okay, please vote.
Okay, that fails by a vote of two to three. So at this point, the reconsideration is not, so we left on September nineteenth. The nos would be Mayor Colacott, Councilwoman Fasenelli, and Councilman Pitts.
I voted yes.
No, you're finished.
Oh, excuse me, Vincent said.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry.
Oh, the names are tied to the seat?
The names are tied to the seats, so I would, we would have to go back. So I guess what verbally is, I'm, I apologize because this is, that's, so. Three vote, there were three no votes.
I am a no.
Okay.
Let's just leave it as it is. I'm, I'm done with it.
And Councilman.
Everybody other piece, move on.
And Councilwoman Fasenelli voted no, so it remains on September nineteenth.
Thank you.
I apologize, we'll have that fixed. I didn't, that was sort of a, I didn't realize the schedule, the voting record changed up there.
All right, is there any other business to that before us tonight?
You're going to record that.
Okay, I have one last item. Supervisor Spitzer had intended to be here tonight, unfortunately wasn't able to join us. But he did leave a commendation for, a resolution for our outgoing mayor, Mayor Nelson. And, uh, I know that Supervisor Spitzer knows, uh, both, uh, past mayor Bill Nelson and his wife Yula, who I believe is still, or was still, yeah, she's still in the audience, she stepped out.
She just stepped out a minute ago.
Anyway, let me read this, uh, resolution from Supervisor Spitzer. Mayor Bill Nelson, City of Villa Park. Whereas Mayor Bill Nelson was first elected to the Villa Park City Council on December twenty fourteen and is currently serving through twenty eighteen. He was selected by his council colleagues to serve as Mayor Pro Tem in twenty sixteen and as mayor in twenty seventeen. And whereas Mayor Nelson currently serves on the Board of the Institute for Local Government and he is the representative for the city council on numerous committees, including the Orange County Mosquito and Vector Control District, Orange County Fire Authority, and the city's Budget and Finance, Human Resources, and Investment Advisory Committees. And whereas he was appointed to the Board of Trustees of the Orange County Cemetery District in two thousand and three, where he served as Chair of the Board in two thousand and six, twenty ten, and twenty fourteen. He has also sat on boards of the California Association of Public Cemeteries, Pacific West Association of Realtors, California Association of Realtors, and the National Association of Realtors, as well as the Orange County Grand Jurors Association. And whereas Mayor Nelson was instrumental in developing Villa Park's Distinguished Citizen Program, where residents are selected to be recognized for their efforts in the community and asked to lead the council in the Pledge of Allegiance at each city council meeting. And whereas he has an MBA in Finance from the University of Southern California and a BA in Economics from California State University Dominguez Hills and began his real estate career after more than twenty-five years as a financial executive for ARCO and Southern California Gas Company. And whereas in addition to his civic and community activities, Mayor Nelson has the love and support of his wife Yula and their four children. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Supervisor Todd Spitzer does hereby congratulate Mayor Bill Nelson on completing his tenure as mayor of the City of Villa Park, commend him for his outstanding and dedicated public service and extend to him best wishes for continued success. December nineteenth, twenty seventeen, Todd Spitzer, Supervisor, Third District. So. Bill. And I've, um, I've traveled around as, on city council to League of Cities and also the California Special Districts and, um, also throughout Orange County, being on the, uh, Orange County Sanitation District and other, uh, activities. Bill is very well known and, uh, people have, not only have a very high regard for Bill, but people love the guy. He's truly a gentleman and, uh, I'm really pleased to serve on council with him. So, thank you, Bill. And with that, the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, Bill.